I'd like to call to order our Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting, which is a committee of the whole, Wednesday, May 28. Superintendent, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Vigoli.
Mrs. Cahill.
President.
Mr. Gattro.
President.
Mrs. Hubley.
President.
Mrs. Lebo. Mrs. Pertios.
President.
And Mayakoke.
President. If you want to please stand, join me in pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance, this flag, the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Just coming off of Memorial Day, let us be mindful of all those Quincy kids serving in our military all across the globe. Thank you. Okay, anybody in the public, public hearing is opened. Anybody want to speak on the budget? I'll ask again, round two. Anybody want to speak on the budget? God, I remember the years when the line was out the door, Superintendent. Okay, seeing no take us, adjourn the public hearing, and we'll go into regulars committee. Jim, did you want to come up? I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point after the presentation by the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent last meeting. Don't say anything, huh? If you feel good, everybody good? Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Best performance ever.
We just have to wait three minutes to go into it?
Yep.
We have two, right? Oh, if he's not here, then.
Mr. Chairman.
Um, it's Kathy. Oh, we need Paul.
Is he coming?
Uh, he said he was.
Okay. Well, Budget and Subcommittee is adjournment, and we'll wait a couple of minutes for the next Subcommittee.
Yeah, that one, okay. Sorry, sorry, again. We will call our meeting to order of the Quincy School Committee Subcommittee, Teaching and Learning, for May 28, and we will open the agenda with Mrs. Wojcik to Quincy Public Schools Language Access Plan. Like to introduce your team.
There are four team members who are instrumental in shaping this plan. They are the Quincy Public Schools' family liaisons, who work directly with families every day, supporting interpretation, translation, and ensuring families have full access to their children's education. So let me take a moment to introduce them. Sitting on my far left is Ray Lau. To my immediate left is Laura Tang. On my right-hand side is Moshi Dong, and on my right side is Ben Wu. Together, we are proud to present this plan to you tonight. We have been honored with the opportunity to be part of an initiative led by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Our district was selected to be one of four districts invited to participate in the very first cohort to develop a language access plan. Two key reasons Quincy Public Schools was selected to be part of the state's first language access plan cohort. Number one, our family liaisons. And number two, our existing language access tools and practices. Since January of 2022, our family liaisons have also taken part in ongoing training through the Edwin Getzler Translation Center at UMass Amherst, sponsored by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. These sessions focus on interpretation and translation best practices, specifically for public school settings, and they've been instrumental in strengthening our team's capacity. This foundation, the training, the tools, and the commitment from staff positions Quincy Public Schools to join the state's first cohort of districts, creating a comprehensive language access plan. We were there with the four, three other districts, Barnstable Public Schools, Revere Public Schools, and Salem Public Schools. And we're even more proud that part of our plan will serve as a model for districts across Massachusetts. Now, what is a language access plan? This plan reflects our district's commitment to providing equitable communication to the members of our school community. It outlines the different services and supports available to help families who need interpretation and translation services engage fully with staff and district resources. Ultimately, this plan is about making sure that every family, regardless of language, has equal access to the tools and information they need to support their children's education. Now, let's take a quick look at the demographics of Quincy Public Schools. Our district is home to 19 schools and over 9,800 students. A key aspect of our diversity is the wide range of languages spoken by our families. In fact, over 70 languages are reported as being spoken within our community, and this diversity enriches our district, but also presents challenges in making sure we're meeting the communication needs of all families. After English, some of the most commonly spoken languages include Cantonese, Mandarin, Portuguese, and Spanish. Understanding this language diversity is a vital step in ensuring that our language access plan is comprehensive and effective. Now, why does Quincy Public Schools need a language access plan? There are a few key reasons that we wanted to highlight for you. First, we live in a global community, and recognizing this language diversity is essential in fostering an inclusive environment. Second, the language access plan promotes two-way communication. And third, it's about respecting each family's uniqueness. By creating a system that acknowledges these differences, we are building stronger relationships. And lastly, our goal is to communicate with families in a language they can fully understand. This is crucial for ensuring that families are able to actively participate in their children's education in school community. One of the key reasons Quincy Public Schools was selected to be part of the state's first language access plan cohort was the strength of our existing language access tools and practices. So let's take a moment to reflect on how this work has evolved. In January of 2020, we made a significant advancement by adopting School Messenger to send mass communications, texts, emails, and phone calls in families' preferred languages. It was a big step toward ensuring all families had timely access to important information. In November of 2020, a spreadsheet was developed with equitable access district-wide and centralized tracking using designated bilingual staff in our partner quarry. In the 2021-2022 school year, we introduced a key resource for language access, the International Translation Company for On-Demand and Scheduled Interpretation Services. In December 2021, we took another significant step toward, forward, by posting a job opening for family liaisons. These roles were created with the specific goal of having trained individuals to serve as a bridge between the school and families who need language access. They provide support, helping families navigate school resources, answer questions, and facilitate meetings, orientations, and parent academies. By January of 2022, we had officially formed the Family Liaison Team. Looking at the 2022-2023 school year, we continue to make strides in enhancing language access for the families, specifically our English learner teachers at both the elementary and middle school levels, concentrated on family engagement through the lens of language access. This training helped educators understand how to better connect with families and understand the available tools in Quincy Public Schools. Another significant development came through the Interpretation and Translation Handbook, created with valuable input from our K-12 English learner teachers. In August of 2023, we adopted Smore, a digital platform that supports automatic written translation in the families' preferred languages. Another big improvement came in how staff request interpreters. We transitioned from a shared spreadsheet to a user-friendly Google form. This shift simplified the process for our staff, which improving the district's ability to track requests, respond quickly, and better manage interpreter assignments. In November, our family liaisons led their first professional development session, focused specifically on language access. With the positive feedback, their professional development session remains an annual offering. A meaningful milestone came in January of 2024, when the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education invited Quincy Public Schools to join its first cohort of districts, developing a formal language access plan. And this invitation reflected the progress we have made, and again, it will become a model that will be shared with and used by other districts across the state. This year has marked a major achievement with the completion of the first draft of Quincy Public Schools' Language Access Plan. This draft of the Language Access Plan reflects not only the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's guidance, but also the lived experience of families and the insights and advocacy of our family liaisons who are here with me this evening. The family liaisons have been instrumental in shaping this work from the ground up, and they will now share the Language Access Plan with you. It is my pleasure to introduce Ray, who will begin the presentation on behalf of the team.
Thank you, Heather. So let's imagine for a moment that you are a new parent stepping into Quincy Public School for the very first time, but your strongest language is in English. Now, imagine that every sign, every form, every conversation is in a language you don't fully understand. Feels a little bit overwhelming, right? That's why today, we are taking a journey through the eyes of one of our families who needs interpretation and translation support, from registration, to school meetings, to family events. We will walk through how Quincy Public Schools supports language access every step of the way. We will look at what works, where we can grow, and how every staff member plays in a part in making our district feel like home for everyone. So buckle up, let's, and let's get started on this meaningful journey. Now, let's zoom in on where the journey really begins, the central registration office. This is where we first meet our families and where language access starts. Step one, families fill out an online pre-registration form, gather basic information. Then, they are contacted to set up an appointment. This is where the magic happens. Thanks to our amazing multilingual staff and over-the-phone interpreters, families can complete this entire process in a language they understand. During this appointment, families also filled out a home language survey, which helps us identify what kind of language support they will need, interpretation for spoken conversation and/or translation for written materials. From the very beginning, we make sure families feel welcome, supported, and understood. Okay, now, here's where I come in. That's my picture. I need a lot of water. So that's actually me in the photo, doing what I love, making that first welcome call to a new QPS family. Once a student is officially enrolled, and a QPS family liaison like me reaches out to say welcome in the family's home language whenever possible. We introduce ourselves, share our contact info, and let families know that they have someone they can always reach out for help. It's also a great moment to double-check their phone number and email, because good communication starts with good contact info. And we don't stop there. We invite families to follow our social media for reminders about school vacation, early release days, and fun district events. Plus, we let them know about things like new parent orientation and parent academy, always in their preferred language. So yes, that first phone call is simple, but it opens the door to real connection and trust, and helps families feel that they truly belong at QPS. Now, I'm going to pass to my colleague Laura to talk more about new parent orientation and parent academy.
Thank you, Ray. Once the families are connected with their family liaison, we invite them to participate in new parent orientation, either in person or online. These orientations are a key touch-up, touch point where we go over important resources and answer any question families may have. Every English learner new family will receive the welcome packet by email, which is available in Chinese, English, Portuguese, and Spanish, includes essential information like the QPS school calendar, Aspen login instruction, Outpack details, health information, and more. It's a helpful tool to make sure families feel informed and confident as they begin their journey with Quincy Public School. Building on that support, our family liaison also conduct virtual parent academies in Mandarin, Cantonese, Portuguese, and Spanish. These workshops provide practical guidance on how to navigate the school system and support student success at home. Topics range from using the QPS website and the Aspen portal to understand report card state assessment like MCAS and SS, and how to prepare for the upcoming school year, including our summer program. Back to the day-to-day communication needs, we offer over-the-phone interpreter service. This is a convenient option for both families and staff. Parents can call the school and request an interpreter, or staff can initiate a three-way call with an interpreter to communicate with parents in real time. This makes sure the language is never a barrier to urgent or routine conversation. Now, I will pass to my colleague Moshi to talk about the interpretation at meetings.
Thank you, Laura. One of the important resources we offer families is the ability to request interpreters for scheduled meetings. The staff, the interpreters can be available online or in person, depending on the situation, to facilitate communication with a family in their preferred language. All QPS staff have access to an online interpreter request form to make the necessary arrangements prior to their meeting. Examples of these meetings include IP meetings, report card conferences, school tours, special ed evaluations, attendance meetings, and many other examples. Another resource available to families are translations. Parents can access the QPS website and school newsletters in their preferred language. The district uses, as mentioned previously, School Messenger to send communication to parents about, for example, weather-related cancellations in their preferred language. And families can also receive essential documents translated into their preferred language. A very important part of having these resources available is to share that information with staff, families, and community members. Some examples on how to do this include staff receiving district-wide communication about how to access the resources, for example, where to find the interpreter request form. Families can see a poster at a school's main office, letting them know to point to their language so that an interpreter could be provided. Community members will be able to access the details of our language access plan on the QPS website, starting in September 2025. Right here on the screen, you can see an example of a poster that lets an individual know that an interpreter can be provided to communicate with the school staff if they point to their preferred language. I will now let my colleague Ben continue with the rest of our presentation.
Thank you, Moshi. Thank you. So the next part is training and educating. Too fast. Okay. First of all, staff who play the role of an interpreter during the interaction with families should be properly trained. And secondly, translators should be equipped with the necessary skills, knowledge, and cultural competence to navigate the complexity of the educational environment and the associated documents. And lastly, QPS family liaisons offer ongoing training opportunities for staff and families about the language access service available. QPS family liaisons receive trainings from the Edwin Getzler Translation Center at the University of Massachusetts Amherst, sponsored by Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, provides online workshops in interpretation and translation for public school settings and the Language Access Plan in Institute, with coaches to guide districts in creating a language access plan for families. And these are some of the topics we've trained. And so far, every one of us has completed and certified 70, 75 hours of training and 20 more after finishing the last topic next month. And each of us benefits from different topics. The last part, monitoring the prevention of language access services. The district monitors language needs through a continuous process of updating and verifying language access data. So as you can see, there's two language icons. It's ongoing update. So the difference between these two icons on the right, one is for oral interpretation needed, means when school need to call the family to pass a message, they need an interpreter. So the other one is for written translation, means when school needs to send a message or flyer, they need to be translated into their language. Prioritically, interaction with families, and also annual online survey. So QPS families, family liaison send out the language access service, feedback survey, end of every school year. Questions such as, what is your primary language? How was your experience with interpretation or translation services prior? Yes. And also, do you have any suggestion to improve our interpretation or translation services? And also, the last one, correcting missing and/or incorrect datas. So that's all from us. Thank you, everyone, and feel free, if you have questions or comment.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. That was wonderful. Have any questions for my colleagues? Mrs. Cahill.
Hi, thank you. Do we get funding for this? Is this primarily funded through our budget? Or is there any kind of state or federal grants that help support the liaisons?
Actually, it was the Title III funding, but initially, when we worked with UMass Translation Center, it was free to Quincy Public Schools, so it was perfect. So it was, they were initially working with districts to train family liaisons. So we got right on board. That was great the first few years. This year, we're paying, but it's through Title III funding.
Okay, so that's good. And what kind of average caseloads do each of liaisons do you have? You know, just on an average. Does anyone want to? Are they all the same, different, some more than others, I'm sure?
Well, it depends on the language. I speak Spanish and Portuguese, so it generally helps those families mainly, and my colleagues divide the workload between Mandarin and Cantonese, because there's more families that need those languages.
And do you, do we initiate a lot of the conversations and the engagement with the families? Or do you find the families are calling you? Or is it more that we have to reach out to them?
That important, like that first contact is important because then they know that they can call us. And once they have that contact information, sometimes they will even give it to a friend who, you know, is about to register somebody in Quincy, but they don't have any children in school, so we have never contacted them before. But I find that when we reach out, the families reach back. You know, they can, they feel comfortable contacting us afterwards.
And do we, are you used a lot by the staff and teachers and administration when, if a student's having difficulties and, you know, you might not have a relationship with the parents? Do you get requests from teachers and staff to connect with families that maybe have a language barrier so you can figure out what's maybe happening with the students?
Yeah, sometimes staff will reach out to the family directly with an interpreter over the phone if it's a simple conversation. Sometimes it's more, like more sensitive topics, maybe that they will ask us to connect to the family, especially if we have already a relationship with the families. We can help that way, too.
Okay. I just want to say from a personal experience, and I shared it before. My mother came to this country, and she was 10, and she didn't speak any English at all. And her primary translator was a 10-year-old girl who was sitting next to her, who was also from Italy. And they didn't understand each other because she was really from Sicily and not, you know, mainland. So like Cantonese, Mandarin, and Chinese, they have all different dialects. And so I understand the need for the liaisons and the translation. And I have to say that we should be really proud of the investment that we make, the city makes, to have this program in place for all of our families. Because from her experience, I think her academic experience would have been much different if they had the resources that we have today. So thank you, and I appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I actually did have two questions. So the handbook, do we, when we do the welcome call or when we visit with new parents, do we go over the handbook with them? I know it's translated, but do we make sure that they fully understand it?
Yes, during our new parent orientation, yeah, we will go through the welcome packet to them and then to make sure that they understand. Actually, we also followed by the parent academy. We'll go more in details. For example, how to use the Aspen or the SS test. Then we will go further more in details during the parent academies.
Okay. And the school calendar, do we make sure that they fully understand the school calendar and the box on the bottom where it has the excused days?
Yeah, because we also translate it in Chinese, Spanish, Portuguese. So, and then we also remind them every monthly that this month, which day is the half day or any special holidays. We will also mark down in our, in their language. So do a note.
All right, and they fully know how to, like, tell the school, who to get in touch with to tell the school that they have a special holiday, that they are going to be celebrating, and that they know how to communicate that to the school? When you make sure you tell them that?
Yeah, because we also have some schools send us their school newsletter. So we know that that school will happen, what kind of event during the month. Then we will also share to our families, too.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. Your question, Mrs. Pertios. Let me just turn your thing on here.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. Thank you for what you do. The role that you guys play in welcoming families, as Ray, as you described, families coming here, that everything's overwhelming. And just the thought of having your child be educated here, I can only imagine is one of the most important things that they're worried about and concerned about, and making that transition as seamless as possible is huge. So thank you all for being here. It's great to have you in the district. What happens, so I know you guys probably speak, you know, so many languages yourselves combined, but if there's a family that comes in that doesn't speak a language that you all speak, do you still reach out to them with maybe an interpreter called in? Or is that how that works? Yes, I'm seeing a yes.
Yeah, basically, because, you know, we, because four of us, you know, speak our languages, right? But for other languages, we always use the over-the-phone interpreter to reach out to them, even though, you know, it might be a little bit, you know, not smooth than, you know, speaking our own languages. But, you know, it's still a very good way to start with the conversation, to start with the connection, to let them know that there is always someone there here to help them.
That's fantastic, yeah, that's great. And just to sort of piggyback on Mrs. Hubley's question. So we have excused absences for different cultural holidays, but the process by which that they need to request that, you can't, they can't just assume that, you know, their child's going to have that day off be excused. So they have to write a note in for that. So that process is explained to them?
Yes, especially for this year. You know, a lot of, like, Chinese parents asking us about, like, at the first day of Chinese New Year. And then we said, it's not a holiday, but you have to write a note to contact a school secretary to let them know that, yes, you are taking that day off because of the first day of Chinese New Year. day of Chinese New Year. But, you know, it's not like, you know, holiday, official holiday for them to take a day off. But if you want to, because of the culture, yes. But you have to write a note, and then we show them how to do it, what the contact phone number and what kind of message that they need to share with the school.
That's great, yeah. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for answering the questions and thank you again for your work.
Thank you. Excellent presentation, great plan. Thank you, as always. I concur with all of the comments that my colleagues have. The, what's astonishing to me is how far we've come in five years, you know? It's just extraordinary how far we've come in five years. I have just a couple of short questions, and I think you just touched on this one. So just walk me through operationally how it works. So I know most of the parents, let's say, they don't, English isn't their primary language, don't speak it, they want to call in for an absence or disciplinary issue, whatever the case may be. Their first contact is the school. I guess my first question is, do they often call you? Yes, they do. And then how do you handle that? And are you pushing them back to call the school? And then how does the school handle it when those calls come in?
Oh, we want to say, sorry, we want to say that we are not pushing them back. It's more like we educate them to how to do it correctly.
Educate them, yeah, not pushing them.
Yeah, because, you know, you know, parents, you know, especially some parents, like, oh, that's like, you know, contact Ray, it's really easy to contact, you know, send a message, you know, send whatever social media. And that, you know, my son would be, you know, officially safe for that day because, you know, someone helped them, you know, take a day off, right? But we always educate them, no matter through phone call, parent academy, new parent orientation. And then we always show different school, different contact number. And then we always encourage them, like, don't worry, if you don't speak English, we have the over-the-phone interpreter. So no worry, just try first. Try to see, you know, maybe next time your kids get sick, you want to take a day off again, maybe we are not available, so what else you can do. So we always encourage them to do by themselves first. If there was a really, like, a big trouble, we can help them to make it through, you know, to contact the office, to, you know, take the day off. But, you know, we always encourage them to do that by themselves.
So in all the schools, the office staff that answers the phone, they're all trained in that? And then just walk me through. So you get a call, someone on the other end isn't speaking English, how?
So...
And you're unclear what language it is?
Sometimes the, if the communication is difficult, they will write down the phone number with the caller ID. And somehow, they get the language, most of the time. The secretaries. And sometimes they will just call the families back after they find the interpreter. They will let them know, I'm calling back with an interpreter. Maybe at that moment, they can't add the interpreter immediately, or sometimes they can. And it's funny because sometimes the school has called the family, and they're just taking a few seconds to call them back with an interpreter, but they will send me a message right away. They called me in English, I don't know what to do. And, but they said they would call me back with an interpreter. And I said, you know, don't worry, they will call you back, or we call the school back together. It works out.
Is this a daily occurrence?
The, what part, the families call the schools?
You know, reaching out through you and you have to navigating them back to the school?
Yes, but not that specific case all the time, but it does happen.
Yeah, on a daily basis. And is there, how many calls do we tabulate? Like, I didn't see any metrics in the plan in terms of, you know, number of families or number of times that you've used the different services or the translation or, or, you know, can we track on the website how many times people access a certain language? Sure. Do we do any of that?
I had a feeling you were going to ask this question. So I looked at the numbers. We have over 700 requests for interpreters to date.
And that's on the phone?
These are scheduled meetings. So over the phones, I'll get that.
In this school year?
Just the school year. And this is just scheduled meetings. So then I'll get the other number for you in terms of the phone.
Yeah.
But that's just scheduled meetings, over 700.
Significant, you know? And then last question. So the, I think in the presentation, it says that the language access plan will be posted in September. The date on the plan is May. Is, I guess, why the delay? And then, two, did you solicit or are you planning to solicit both parental or student input on the plan before it goes final?
That was the reason. We did May because we wanted to make sure you saw it first.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then the next step will be to get feedback from our families and then from staff. And that way, we can actually roll it out fresh in the fall.
Great. Excellent. No more questions. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. And I can fully understand why our families want to call you first because you're all so wonderful, so very outgoing. So thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you all.
Okay, next we have Dr. Perkins will be presenting our CPPI grant update. Dr. Perkins.
Thank you very much for having us here tonight. And I am thrilled to introduce you to Monique Antonelli, who is the CPPI Grant Coordinator, and Cleona McLaughlin, who is one of which you'll hear a lot about, our itinerant team members. She is our speech and language pathologist. And I just have to thank them because this grant, for those of you that haven't dealt with early education and care, it is a difficult organization to deal with. All the complaints I have about the Department of Ed, I may take back because it's challenging. And they have taken this grant and really done an amazing job. And we are, I personally am very fortunate to have them. So just to remind you, the Commonwealth, the CPPI grant is the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative grant. So we are coming, we received that grant at the beginning of the year. It was $250,000. We are coming to the close of that grant. And I will say, we are eligible. It is competitive, but we are eligible for $500,000 next year. And we're really hopeful that we get that. We have big plans for those funds, so we're very hopeful that that will happen. And you'll hear a little bit, we did just have a site monitoring visit from Early Education and Care. They came, they met with our leadership team, which we'll talk to you about. And it was actually a great meeting, very productive. And I think they were very impressed with what we've done in a short amount of time. So just before we begin, there's a quote here just about how important preschool is in access to early childhood. So the human brain develops most rapidly between birth and age five, making the preschool years a crucial part of a child's education. So just to review what we will talk about today, we'll go through our leadership team, our community partners, tell you a little bit about the needs assessment that we just completed, talk a little bit about our priorities in the grant. And then we'll end with what we are working on right now, which is our strategic action plan, which we will have to submit with our application for the next round of grant funding. So this is our leadership team members. We're really fortunate, we've met multiple times. So I don't even know, maybe 10 or 12 times at this point throughout the course of the year, maybe more. We're really fortunate. We have Sarah Morrison and Marissa McClellan from Qcare are on our team, Mike Marani from the curriculum office, Jen Leary from Special Education, Amy Ford from Walston Childcare, Ketha Reichel from QCAP, Christine Coyne, who's the program director at QCAP, Bernadette Davidson from BCNC, Amy McCray, and Janice Boudreau and Jennifer Curtis, who are from Stars. Nicole Caldwell from Campus Kinderhouse is on our team, Christine Swan from the YMCA, Chris Tierney from our office, our data coordinator, Monique Antonelli, who I just introduced you to, Cleona McLaughlin, who is our itinerant speech therapist, Brianna Keating, who is the Senior Director of Prevention Services from Bay State, Stacy Dimino, who is our consultant, who has been wonderful and so helpful, and Adele Robinson, who is a consultant that we work with through, hired through the Department of Elementary, Education, and Care, and is from a company called ABT Global. And so just our community partners, so when we originally applied for this grant, we did have to identify community partners that we would be working with. And so we were really fortunate that, and it's actually grown over the year. People found out that we were participating in this and asked if they could be a part. And we were like, absolutely, sure, come on down. So we have Campus Kinderhouse has been a partner right from the beginning. Head Start has been a partner right from the beginning, and Walston Childcare, and Stars, and YMCA. YMCA came on a little bit later. And it's been really a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to get to know those partners, work with people in our community who provide early childhood care and education to the students that we end up getting in kindergarten. So really having, being able to work with them, collaborate, align, just all around, whether we get the grant or we don't get the grant, I think we all agree, the work that we've done in building relationships with these community providers was well worth it. So we'll just go over some of the data that we collected in terms of the needs assessment. So in terms of strengths, one of the questions that we asked our families, and I think we had somewhere around 200 families about that completed the survey. We also sent it out to current kindergarten students. We sent it out to our staff as well as the program staff in the, in our community partners and the directors. So we talked to a lot of people, and I have to thank Stacy for that and Christopher because they worked on this data. So we asked, did the care and education that your child received during preschool meet your needs? And a strength for us and the Quincy community, because this isn't just us, this is all of the community providers that students might have attended, not just Quincy Public Schools. So a little bit over 70% said yes. So we have some work to do there, but in general, I think, given the fact that kids can come from all different places, that's a pretty good number. And how was your child's transition process to kindergarten? For the most part, our families feel like it was pretty smooth, ranging from somewhat smooth, very smooth, to excellent. So very few people thought that it was not smooth. And so for, again, that's another strength for us and for our work with our community partners. So some of, we also asked our families, what were some of the challenges and barriers to early education and care? And so when we, in the data that we collected, the top three challenges, which I don't think anyone will find super surprising, is the cost of childcare was number one. The schedule, and that has to do particularly with our program. I think the schedule can be a barrier. And then waitlist and lack of openings. And we'll talk a little bit about that, but there's around 300-ish or 400 families currently today on the waiting list for early care, for childcare, preschool, you know? And their vouchers are frozen, so there are no vouchers. And, you know, it's definitely, it's a big barrier for families. So just some of the quotes about, you know, what parents were experiencing from our needs assessment in terms of the barriers, that there are long waitlists, as I mentioned, high costs. There needs to be more options for parents. The cost of childcare, again, you see that. And that there is not enough available spots. We have a waiting list in Quincy Public Schools in our public preschool program. And then also, of course, there's waiting lists in all of the private preschools as well. And the last quote there, both of my kids, kids attended full-time childcare infant pre-K. We had great teachers here in Quincy, but it was so expensive. When both of our children were in care, it was close to $50,000 per year. So very expensive. And so just in terms of how people rated, the cost, obviously, as I said, number one, waiting list was pretty significant. Schedule, in particular, our part-time hours, people, families are definitely looking for at least a six-hour day. Some are looking for longer, including like aftercare was something that we discovered. And again, I don't think we found any of this shocking. So the lack of after-school for preschool students, transportation, I think we thought that might come up a little bit higher than it did, but it definitely is a barrier because we have a lot of students, I think 54 actually, to be exact, that come to us in the morning and then get bussed over to Head Start. And so without that bus, if there's not that bus in the morning, if your child comes to the part day and you work, you can't get your kid or your child to an after, you know, afternoon preschool session. And then curriculum and readiness came up, but not as a significant concern. And so I'll just talk about, you know, what we focused on in terms of the grant, and then I will turn it over to Monique. So some of the initial benefits, I think that one of the things that this grant really allowed us to do, and Cleona will do this much more justice than I will, but is that we thought outside of the box. So was there another way, instead of children leaving or coming part-day to our two-hour-a-day program, was there another way for us to provide access to our students? And so the Department of Elementary, of Early Education and Care, allowed us, in this grant, to pilot the idea of an itinerant speech pathologist. Ideally, we'd love to grow this team, but that would push out into the community pre-K and provide services, evaluations, access to special education right there in their pre-K so they don't have to leave. And so I think we've found huge success with that, and I'll let Cleona talk about that. They're able to provide screenings, evaluations, onsite services, right there in the childcare. So instead of having to go back and forth to have your child evaluated multiple times, sometimes, you know, students would go to Snuck Harbor, RDLC, you know, all over the city, and then end up having to arrange for their child to receive, you know, services maybe at nine o'clock in the morning so they could take them for that hour and then go to work after, you know? Or attend hour, half-day morning program and try to find another program after that could take your child for the rest of the day. So this is really, you know, streamlined that. We've also been working with our outside providers, our community partners, private pre-Ks, and Monique will talk about this on a curriculum pilot. So we have teachers from in Quincy Public Schools and from community providers piloting the same curriculum with the idea that if we got this grant funding, this could be something that we could potentially, we would implement the preschool curriculum and the private providers would implement the preschool curriculum, therefore aligning our curriculum materials. So our students that end up coming to us for kindergarten, the curriculum that they would receive in Campus Kinderhouse is the same as what they would receive if they were with us. So that's, you know, something else that we're working on. Some of the things, you know, in the future that we really want to do is to expand our itinerant team, hopefully adopt new curriculum. We're also about to enter into some work on assessment, to align our assessments with our community care providers. It's obviously for the idea of to promote a positive transition of preschool and K. And we've started it with this grant, offering collaborative professional development and training opportunities. So our preschool teachers with outside provider preschool teachers, learning together, getting professional development together. So we're increasing the private preschool providers' ability to provide high-quality staff, which in the end benefits us because, again, we, these are our kids that we are going to have in kindergarten. And so with that, I will turn it over to Monique, who will talk about our priorities.
Good evening. Off of Dr. Perkins' spiel, I want to go back to the quote about the human brain develops most rapidly between birth and age five, making the preschool years a crucial part of a child's education. As we just heard, investing in preschool has long-term benefits. I'm not sure if any of you are aware, but 90% of a child's brain is developed by the time they turn five. Studies show preschools provide the stimulation needed during this rapid growth. Quality preschools are equipped with properly trained, qualified, and educated teachers who understand development and core skills. That shape how a child learns, interacts, and grows. With that being said, 85% of who you are, your intellect, your personality, social skills, all develop during these formative years. Okay. Do I do it?
No, I can do it.
Oh, priority one, sorry. Okay. So in the CPPI grant, we have to address three priorities. And I think for every district, their priorities are different. In our district, priority one is access to quality preschool. So a CPPI classroom has to be a six-hour-day classroom, so we cannot implement a full day in our QPS classrooms. So that's where it would come in, in our partnerships. But that's a long-term goal. So access is not one of our higher priorities. But we, Cleona is one of our, she's helping children get access. she's helping children get access in their childcare. Least restrictive environment, they're getting more time with their, with their peers, less transitions. And then access to quality curriculum, as Dr. Perkins said. The partnerships have jumped in with us, some of them, and piloted the curriculum along with the QPS teachers. So in the future, or if we get the grant, we hope to implement the new curriculum, identify classrooms in the childcares or spots for children. As Dr. Perkins said, build on our itinerant team. And by doing that, these children won't have to go to our QPS classrooms, so it will reduce the waitlist in the integrated pre-K.
Sorry. Sorry.
So in this initial grant, I identified, while I researched and identified, two curriculums, two highly researched quality pre-K curriculums, Frog Street and Three Cheers. I reached out to both programs, they were excellent. We had a group PD with all of the QPS pre-K teachers, and there was a director from Campus Kinderhouse in the Y, and they were interested in the programs as well. So all the teachers heard the presentation for both programs, and then I let them decide, well, it was on a volunteer basis, which curriculum they would like to pilot. We piloted both curriculums for four weeks. It was the Monday right after, oh, right there. It was 4:28 to 5:23, we just finished this past Friday. In both, we had a similar theme, it was an animal theme. Both curriculums have nine themes, each one four weeks long. I have a survey that they're going to fill out, and we're all meeting on the 11th to discuss pros and cons of both, and hopefully we can decide on one that we all liked. But the kids, I've been in all the classrooms while it's being implemented, and the kids loved it. So it's going to be a tough decision. But we did have six QPS teachers and three community-based teachers that volunteered to support this effort. So it's been great. If we get the grant, we'd like to implement a high-quality research-based curriculum in all QPS pre-K classrooms. The joint PD and opportunities, which happened actually during the pilot too, because some teachers from Snug were doing the same pilot as some from RDLC. So there was a lot of collaboration going on, which was great, as well as with the community preschool teachers. And as Dr. Perkins said, we're working on, hopefully, aligning assessments and screenings, the tools, because right now, the ones that, they're not, everyone's using different tools. So we need to figure out so that we're all on the same page when they go to pre-K. And now, priority three.
Hi, so as Dr. Perkins said, my name's Cleona McLaughlin, and this is my first year in Quincy Public Schools. And I was very excited to come over to be part of this grant initiative. So I started seeing students within four of the five named partnerships. As Dr. Perkins says, the Y came, has come on as the program's already started. So the four of the five childcares, I have been going into the program since December. So just a few months now. In that time, I now have a caseload of 21 preschool students. I have completed 11 full and comprehensive speech and language evaluations, and I have completed 18 screenings. So I just wanted to go down a little bit, I suppose, and kind of just give just examples, because whilst there are numbers and they're great, I think it's really what it means to the, on the ground, what it means to the students and the families of Quincy. So first of all, I think is really, really key is the accessibility to families. So of the students, three of these students were in the childcares that I go into. Prior to this grant starting, they had been evaluated and were qualified and deemed eligible for speech and language therapy services through Quincy Public Schools preschool department. As a lot of families are now, that was, it would mean, sorry to backtrack, that would mean they were offered a slot, it's typically 30 minutes a week, so it could be, we'll say 10 o'clock on a Tuesday. For, I would say, the large majority, I don't have figures, but from a large majority of families, that's just completely inaccessible. Most families have working parents now. So it was just these three particular students, they had begun speech and language therapy services. The families wanted it, they recognized the need, their child qualified, but then they had to cease bringing them purely because they logistically could not get them there. And again, I think that's so, it must be such an awful feeling for a family. I'm a mom, and that's something I couldn't do. I couldn't just leave my job to bring my child to a 30-minute session. But I think for the families, that must be an awful predicament to be in, where there's no way around. So the childcares, when I started working in them, they said to me, hold on, like, you know, we have our little Jimmy over here, and this is the situation. So I did either a rescreen or a reevaluation, depending on how long it had been since their initial evaluation. And two of the three requal, like, were still eligible, I should say. And so now they're receiving weekly speech and language therapy services, which they, again, were eligible for, but it was just because the families logistically couldn't get them there. And that's just the three that we know of. And remember, again, we are so far, because this is just a first initiative, this is the first rollout, there's just four childcare programs. And when we think about how many students there are in Quincy and how many childcare programs there are, how many more students are out there today that this may also be applicable to? The next thing is the collaboration with teachers. Often we'll see on IEPs that there is consultation put on. I often will put on consultation kind of once a month. And when you're in a classroom within a school, that happens kind of naturally. And more often than not, more often than 15 minutes, you're bringing this child back, you're having a quick check-in with a teacher, giving them recommendations, et cetera. When a student, though, is in the preschool out in the community, we can recommend these collaborations and consultations, but in reality, on the ground, like, how does that happen? How does that logistically happen that a speech and language therapist that's working in Quincy Public Schools is then going to potentially collaborate with a teacher in Head Start? It's very logistically difficult, not impossible, but it's very hard. This happens so easy, it happens all the time, every day in my job. One example being, I have a little friend who I work with, and he has like a serious fear of missing out. He wants to be at every gathering, every social event. And he's three and a half, and when I'm with him, he's listening to, you know, hear where the teacher's going, because they're in the room next door. So her and I spoke, because when he knows I'm coming, he's asking, he's at the door, but then when he's with me, he's kind of waiting to see if the class is going anywhere. So with the teacher, we spoke about how he needs support with his attention. So we then did a first-then board. A first-then board is a very, very simple, easy concept. I literally took a picture of myself and then a picture of the teacher, and I, it says first, then, that's, it's that simple. So it was a visual reminder, he, this little boy knows this is his board, he knows he goes and gets it when the session starts. He can bring it with me. It started off where I had to remind him regularly during the session, first Miss Cleona, and then his teacher's name. And now, it's kind of, kind of by the wayside. He kind of took ownership for a while, and he would remind himself. But this is just, this is just one example of something the teacher can then use with this student across other parts of his day, then with other students in her classroom, and then for her to share that knowledge with other teachers within her setting. So the collaboration just naturally happens, and I feel like it's gonna, it's, you're working with teachers that don't necessarily have significant sped background. And that's not to diminish the skills they have, but it really just fosters that collaboration between your knowledge and what they can implement. The other thing is culturally, how culturally responsive it is. I looked around, I think the team have gone, but I've worked in two prior neighboring school districts, and I can say that, again, just really be mindful of the experience for the family, because that's why we're here every day and all day. I have rang in previous school districts, I have rang parents where I didn't know that English wasn't their first language. And I'm saying to them, just like the translator had said, I'll call you back. But I have had to go days before I could access, because there was a whole protocol you'd have to go through. And in Quincy Public Schools, I literally pick up the phone, just like they explained. And I, there's only been a couple of times, because I've got such good background information, there's only been a couple of times that I didn't know English wasn't their first language. But that can be remedied in a minute, I'm calling them back. And again, if any of us here are parents, like, to think that if you get a call from your child's school, that, but you don't have a clue what they're trying to tell you, that can be very, you know, overwhelming. And then you've got to sit and wait days until someone calls you back. Whereas the, with this process, again, it's so cultural, Quincy has enabled it to be so culturally responsive. And again, I think that kind of, and it was interesting to hear their presentation, but that leads into just the facilitation of the preschool and how important it is and what we're doing, and then moving forward to kindergarten. And then, I'm just going to get a sip of water, sorry. I think another thing is, which is huge, is trust. Getting these families to kind of, per se, trust us. And I say trust because the thing about it, I think, especially when you work under like the special ed umbrella, we throw out the terms disability, communicate, sorry, disability, communication disability, IEP, all the time. We just throw it out there as if it's not a big deal. The reality is that it is a big deal, and I think education is key and knowledge. And for some families, when they're getting a phone call to say that we suspect your child may need additional needs, may need additional support, sorry, then you're going to have an IEP meeting, you're gonna, we're diagnosing your child with a disability. Again, this is something we do every day, but for families, this can be extremely overwhelming. I know I sat in my son's first IEP meeting last year, and I started to cry. And I was like, I've sat in these all my life, like, this, not all my life, but for quite a significant period of time. And it really gave me a sense for families of how intimidating this is. And the wonderful thing about this program is that if we were to receive a referral from early intervention, or from a pediatrician, or from a school, or even a parent before this grant came along, there's kind of like, I suppose, a disconnect, where we're just people at the other end of the phone until they meet us. And it can be very, very scary and intimidating. Whereas what I've found is that these families, they have a trust with their childcare. They are leaving their children in these people's care every single day. So I have found it wonderful that you've kind of got over that barrier. Because when the teacher, or the director, or the staff member that they are leaving their child with is recommending that I may to come in and meet their child, it's just such an ease, it's such a transition. And one example, there was a student recently who the teacher has felt for a while that the student needed additional services, and the families, the family, I should say, sorry. It's just something that they weren't in a place to, you know, to move forward with at that time. And then after some months of discussing this, whenever I started working in this particular childcare, the teacher said, well, we have a speech and language therapist that could just do a screening. All they're going to do is a screening, they're just going to chat with the student for like 15 minutes. And the parents were okay with that, they were open to that. I then spoke with them on the phone, I was able to tell them what I had seen. Of course, their child's many strengths, but why in which I felt that a full speech and language evaluation was necessary. The child is now going to be receiving speech and language services, but this is after one year of the childcare, trying to encourage the family to come on board. And I say come on board because, again, it is, it can be a very big and daunting and intimidating process. And I think by being in their child centers, that eradicates it. But I think the biggest thing for me, which I was surprised, was the screenings, how imperative and valuable they have been. They've really become like a consultation to parents. So typically what happens is, before this grant came on board, is that if a teacher had concerns or was questioning the communication needs of a student in their class, logistically, they have to often collect a little bit of data, so they have something to like discuss with the family. They have to catch mom or dad, or whoever guardian is at pickup. Often, you know, families are rushing out the door. They then have to catch them and kind of discuss with the family. I have these concerns about your student's communication needs, and I think you should kind of look into it a bit more. And again, going back to like being assumptions that we know what the family needs to do with this information, often families don't, because why would they? If they don't work in this world, well, okay, you're telling me this information, but now what? Do I go to the pediatrician? Some families know they've aged out of early intervention. And so then they have to, and all of this takes time, it cuts away at the time. And as Monique said, these, this three-to-five-year age gap is so imperative, it's so vital that early intervention works, the earlier we can get in and get them these services. So in this process, months can go by, absolutely months, just to get the information to the parent for them to then have to mull over, what do I do with it? They don't know what to do. So what we've been doing is that I generated a screening form. All the teachers have it across the four centers. They can speak with the family, just explain. And then it often seems, again, very easy, like nonchalant, that we have a speech and language therapist here, she's just going to do a screening. The families obviously give consent to do that. I'm in each of the four centers every single week, so within the following week, I do the screening. And once I do that, I have a consultation with the teacher there and then, what I see, what I'm hearing, what I, if I'm recommending a full evaluation or not. And then I call the parents. Typically, I call the parents that day, the longest it's been is 24 hours. During that time, I speak with the parents, again, I express what I've seen, whether I'm recommending a full speech and language evaluation or not. And twofold to why I think that's so beneficial is that if I am recommending a full evaluation, it's that initial contact and explaining why in which I think that a full evaluation should happen. And just to walk them through, these are the next steps. But I think even what's been surprising to me is if they don't need a full evaluation, if they're doing just fine, it's educating the families of, your child's doing great. Like, these speech sounds that they're not producing, that's totally okay. And they're not expected to produce that until they're six. I'm giving them like the developmental norms over the phone, and it's then like buffering children that would possibly and most likely be coming in through Quincy Public Schools for a full evaluation, you know, using resources when that's not necessarily, you know, appropriate for the student at the time. So that's been, I think, the most surprising, wonderful thing. And in that, like I say, the students are able to stay in their program as well.
So I know Cleona has added just some quotes here from families that, you know, you can take a look at, that I think everywhere Cleona goes, everybody loves her. I mean, they love them both, and I think they're so grateful for the two of them. But she's definitely a rock star in the pre-K world. And so just some of our goals that, as we mentioned, that we would like to do with Priority Three is, we'd love to expand this model. I think we all feel that it's been very, very successful. And we'd love to add, I think the next thing we would all agree that we would add would be something for behavior and social emotional support out to, that could go, a person that could go out to the private pre-Ks, because we hear that a lot, that students aren't successful, and it's because of behavioral issues. And we'd love to eliminate the midday bus travel if we, if we could, or decrease it. And then provide, you know, more opportunities to get some of those families off the waitlist that could attend the half-day program. And so where we are now, we are at the point where we are working on our strategic plan. And so just you see there, some of the things that we're working on. We've done a lot in a short amount of time, which I think we're all very proud of. And so we'd love to adopt a curriculum. We would love to be able to align that with some of our preschool, our community partners are already agreeing to pilot it, we'd love to expand that. We'd love to standardize our assessments and align those with our community providers. We definitely think that that is time to do that. We'd love to increase accessibility to special education services and, you know, be able to, as we said, provide services in an inclusive setting, which would be their community locations. I already mentioned, expand the itinerant team and just continue to align in terms of professional development, preschool, things like that with our community partners. We do believe that doing this work will support workforce development, especially for our community providers, because the requirements for what you need to be an EEC-licensed educator are very different than what you need for, to be a teacher in Quincy Public Schools. And oftentimes, you know, I think that the level of education is just different. And so we'd love to be able to provide some more opportunities for professional development, work collaboratively with our Quincy- work collaboratively with our Quincy preschool teachers. And in the end, that is going to increase the level of high-quality educators that are out there providing these services to our students in these community-based partnerships. And I think the more support that we can get, especially provides, you know, with consultation models like Cleona is doing, being in community-based provider classrooms, because there is high turnover in some of our community-based provider sites. And the directors definitely acknowledge that in, in this work, that they see a lot of turnover. And so I think to be able to provide support, education, professional development, so that they know that they're, these teachers are not alone and that we can actually help them to provide the best possible quality care for our students. And then ideally, dream world, we'd love to offer some full-day classrooms, CPPI-funded classrooms. I, we don't know if, if, you know, feasibility, even if the grant only goes so far, but I think we could start by looking at potentially offering CPPI-funded slots in some of our community-based provider locations. So therefore decreasing the waitlist, also opening up some potential spots in our own pre-k by doing that. So those are the things that we're working on. We had a meeting on Tuesday with our leadership team that was very successful and, you know, we'll keep doing that, so we hopefully will get the grant. And then this just kind of sums up where we are, all of the things that you've already heard us talk about. And so just to end with the things that we've done, some of the things that we didn't really go into, we also did cost modeling with our private pre-k's. And we are, you know, as I said, you know, working currently on our strategic plan. And that is our presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. When, when did we hear about the $500,000?
So the grant actually hasn't come out yet. We do know that we're, we have been told that we can apply for up to $500,000. And I did actually just reach out to, our contact at EEC to ask when it was going to be released. And they said, didn't give us a date, basically. But we're assuming that it's going to be due probably at the end of June, we think. So that, so we're not really sure. But we know it's coming, it is already allocated money. So we do know that it is coming. So we'll let you know.
I was going to say, I, I know the IEP is definitely scary. I'm, the first one I went to was over 20 years ago, and I still remember how scared I was, sitting in that really small chair at the table. I can still bring myself back there. It was a very scary experience. Mr. Bagoli?
Great presentations. I think every legislator should get the quote from Angela Thayer. So they understand the importance of early childhood, early childhood education. And a lot of people understand that kindergarten is not required in the state.
Right.
And if you do go in other communities, you pay for it.
Correct.
Quincy's fortunate that we, it's funded and our kids are, are given that opportunity to, to grow. It sounds like the model that you're talking about is the old chapter one model, where if a person was in a private school, private school, and they qualify, they would get services. Is that what, is this?
Similar, yeah, similar. Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but i- if a kid qualifies, it's, it doesn't cost anything, am I correct? If they're in a?
If they qualify for services?
Correct.
They don't, I mean, they're not paying us anything, isn't that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Okay. All right, well, again, some of the stuff we pay for in the state, which is, I think, nonsense, a lot of it, this is front and center, the most important thing, because it's our future.
Absolutely.
It's so, it's so critical for the development, so.
We agree.
There's actually studies that show that children that go to preschool, wait, I haven't written down, they attend, hold on. Children who attend quality preschool programs and documented as having better social skills are less likely to become involved in crime, more likely to graduate from high school and attend college. So it is, it's huge.
I just, my own two grandchildren, I, they both can read, they're not, they just, one just entered kindergarten and the other one's going to. They're both reading. I mean, that was unheard of before, and it, it's attributed to their preschool experience. So it's, it's just so, it's a no-brainer.
And we, we do have, I totally agree with you, Mr. Bagoli. And one of the things that we did through our work is that we do have at least about 15% of our kindergarten population that have no early childhood experience.
Right.
None. And so although it might not seem that significant, it is when you're, you're starting kindergarten and you're coming in next to your grandchildren. You know, it, it, it absolutely starts them at a disadvantage.
Right. And our, our, our families who are at disadvantage cannot access this as readily. And they are put behind the, as you said, behind the eight ball from the get-go.
Right.
And they're paddling upstream for the rest of their school careers.
Their whole school career, right.
Yeah. So again, this is so important, and the legislature, the governor, need to understand this. I mean, she went to Harvard, so I assume she's fairly bright. Get on board, get with the program. So, but thank you for the presentation, it was terrific.
All right. Mr. Gatto?
Thank you. First, welcome to Monique and Cleona. It's great to have you here. Second, way back when I was on the city council, when we passed full-day kindergarten, and my kids were some of the first ones that went through it, and I saw a, a complete change in their growth. And so I understand the value, the education they went through preschool early on. Every couple of years, this body sits and we talk through priorities and we have yellow stickies and we put them up on the board and you pick your own priorities. And the last time we did that, mine was universal pre-k. And I believe in that strongly for all of the reasons that you laid out in your presentation. You know, I kind of follow what's happening at the state politically. I know Governor Haley has been a big proponent of universal pre-k and this is kind of the seed money. And I think this grant, we got this grant, it was announced last April, right, a year ago, April. And then they had another round in September, I think we were part of 16 schools that got some of the money. So we're seeing the fruits of that labor right now, which is pretty exciting. I, I did have a, one question, which is, can you just explain to me, and I, I didn't follow it exactly, how this grant reduces the backlog? You know, reduces, so there, there's a demand that can't be met. I mean, the cost, cost is prohibitive, number one, but there's a demand that can't be met, and if we're not building more brick and mortar classrooms, how, how do you reduce that backlog?
Yeah, so I think that one of the things that we would like to do is so for students who can remain in their community preschools, and we could provide services there, then they're not taking a slot in Quincy Public Schools. So therefore, then that could potentially free up a spot. There's also the issue, you know, the, so that's one way that we're looking at it, that, that by, you know, if I'm not, if I'm going to Campus Kinderhouse and I don't have to go for half-day to RDLC, because now I can stay at Campus Kinderhouse and I can receive those services, now I've opened up a spot at RDLC for someone on the waitlist. So we're, we're looking at it that way, but we're also looking at it from the lens of there's no vouchers for pre-k right, right now. The, the vouchers are, are shut off, they're frozen. And vouchers are really hard to get anyways, you know, in terms of like who's eligible for a subsidized preschool spot. But we could, if we knew about a family and we got this grant, we could set aside funds so we could subsidize a CP, a CPPI spot. Doesn't have to necessarily be for a student in our pre-k, it could be for a student at Head Start, you know? So we're looking at it all different ways, but we are definitely looking at, like, what are the ways that can get more kids access to early childhood education?
So there's 54 children currently right now. There's 54, sorry. There's 54 children that are spread out between our five partnerships that are bused from RDLC and Snug to their childcare. So if we could provide them speech, PT, whatever it is on their IEP, their service delivery, if it can be brought to them, those 54 children open up 54 spots, because they no longer have to go to a QPS location.
That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The other thing I was just going to say, the other huge benefit, which we discussed at the meeting, is that the model that's in place right now, where there, some of them are actually starting at their childcare, they're getting on a bus to come to QPS, then they're getting on a bus to go back to their childcare. Now, these are children that we, not all of them, I can't say an umbrella, but it's, a lot of these students struggle with transitions. So we're like, oh, transitions are hard, so let's give you a few more. Like, it's a lot of transitions in the day, on and off a bus, different staff members, et cetera, different classroom setups, it can be significant. So as well as the numbers, it's like kind of the, you know, the educational experience for the students.
And then two final questions on the grant that hasn't opened yet.
Yeah.
So I, I saw, I think it was the round that we were in was Gateway Cities only. Do you know if the $500,000 grant is Gateway Cities only?
It's Gateway Cities, yeah. I believe so, yes.
It's good, because it's narrower.
Yeah. I, I think we have a really good, we've done a lot and we've, we're checking all of the boxes that they want us to check. So I, we, I think we feel really good about the, the chances of us getting the funding.
And so you said the, the money's already there, that means it's FY25 money?
I think it's FY, considered FY26, but it's already allocated, just from the, like, from the governor. I'm, I just not really my area.
But it's, so it's not in, it's not in the FY26 budget, so it must be in the FY25 budget, right?
Maybe, yeah, I'm not sure.
Okay, but you, you think it's there?
We've been told it's there.
Great.
So.
Good news. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cahill?
Okay. So just to clarify, this $500,000 pays for, so all the students are at their own pre-k's, right? And we're paying for supports to go into those pre-k's partners. Families are paying for their, for their preschool tuition. So they're paying for all of their tuition. So this $500,000 has nothing to do with helping with the cost of?
It could.
It could, potentially, like what you, what you're saying. But it's, but right now, that's where that is, right? So I think the goal, and just to clarify from, you know, from your perspective, is really to bring the, the resources to the students and partner. Now, you said four partners, who were the four that we have been working with? Because we have like six up there, but is it all of them?
Head Start, Stars, Wallaston, Childcare, and Campus Kinderhouse.
Okay. And so it's basically, so we can bring the services in, and then the funds would, are paying for those specialists, right, to go in? And also for PD, for, for all, for that, those teachers and making sure that, also aligning the curriculum between all of the schools with our, with QPS.
Yes, yep.
And then so when you talked about the survey saying that the transition into kindergarten, was that our students coming in? Did we survey our kids coming into kindergarten to see what that transition was like for them?
It was Quincy students that.
Came from some of those.
Either did just come into kindergarten, or, you know, had maybe, are about to, you know, those, it was two different groups, but it was our current kindergarten.
Our current students. And then, because I think the curriculum piece is huge, right? And like, you know, you explained. I think my, my real question is the money, you know? If we're lucky enough to get this $500,000, that's great, and we can do a lot with it, right, to, to meet our goals. But then what do we do after that? You know? Because am I right that we get, we have a mandate from the state to have pre-k in our system by 2033 or something like that?
I don't think, we don't have a mandate to have universal pre-k. But we have always, you have to provide services for students who are, when they turn three. So for students who are, have, you know, needs, like a special education needs, or, so you do, we do have that. And so how we do it, and I would say, I think pretty much every other district around does it, is that they have the integrated model, which is, you know, half the class is students on IEPs and half the class are what you would call typically developing peers.
Okay, so I, I misunderstood that there was like some mandate out there for universal childcare.
I know the governor is, that's one of her priorities.
But it hasn't been pushed.
But we haven't, it hasn't, it hasn't been given to us as like a mandate. But I do believe that this work that we're doing right now, and the, the funding that she is allocating towards, you know, early preschool opportunities, is moving us toward that direction. So whether or not that will actually end up passing and being something we have to do, I, I don't know, but it certainly is heading in that direction.
So I, I, I think when you talk about the turnover for pre-k and, you know, in the, in the preschools and the, what the pay scale for the teachers in a preschool setting is, is minimal. It's terrible. And I, and I think if we're investing money and time into professional development for staff of, you know, of these partners, and then they find that they're not getting paid enough for the work that they're doing and they have to transition into another career, now that kind of, that investment is just being turned over, you know? I think we should be thinking about how we can find a way to make that career a little more sustainable for, like if we can, I don't know, make an investment in stipends or something for them.
Can do that, yes.
You know, I don't, yeah, if we can do that. Because I think that if we're investing in them, that's, that's one of the problems that I think that we see with that, that set of educators.
That is one of the things that's allowable with the grant, is to try to help, like, offset that.
So I think that's important. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for all the work you're doing. And just hearing you both speak about, I'm obviously Dr. Perkins too, but hearing you both speak about the work that you're doing and just, it, it's obviously personal to you and that's fantastic. It's just, that's exactly what our youngest kiddos need. So, and I just, I can't help but feel that this is not only just going to help the kids that are struggling as they come into kindergarten, but also the kiddos, like Mr. Bagoli was describing his grandson, you know, the kiddos that already come into kindergarten, kind of that leg up, they're, they're kind of waiting for the teacher to have all that attention for those kiddos to bring them up. And they're kind of reading a book in the corner as they already know the curriculum in kindergarten. And I think kindergarten's the toughest grade where you have kids coming in that are just all over the place. They have different backgrounds and what they've been prepared for. So I think this is going to help the kiddos at the top as well, where the teacher is going to be able to eventually kind of know what to expect when they come in, just like any other grade teacher has, you know, the built, the years built on in the previous, prior to them coming there. So I think that's great, that we're going to be able to address that as well. Is the plan to include, so we have more pre-k programs in Quincy than just those partners you described, is the plan to reach out to all of them? Or, I'm just not sure. I understand that, that we've picked some of them and some of them have asked to come on board, but what about those other programs, is there?
Yeah, so we would love to include as many as possible. You know, I think the issue does become funding, because, you know, like Cleona's only one person, so she, you know, there's only so much time in the day to be able to get to the different childcare settings. But yes, we would, I mean, ideally, like even things like as simple as curriculum of professional development, the more the merrier. So we started, I don't think we really, at least I didn't really think that this would take off as well as it has, or as much as it has with the, with our community partners, but they've really been amazing and everybody wants to participate. So yes, I think we would love to, and there is a list, you can get access to a list online. So we would love to reach out to as many as possible. And I know Monique has, has done a really nice job working with the partners that we currently have, but going out, doing observations, getting to know those directors, you know, so we, that's, you know, something we'd love to expand if we were to get this grant.
Yeah, no, that's, it's a lot of work. And I think I'd love to see, as Mrs. Cahill was kind of talking, you know, you have that, this pot of money, where is it going to go toward? And I, I agree, I mean, families are saying the cost of childcare. I had three in pre-k all at the same time, I know exactly, you know, it's very, it's a financial hardship. And especially for families that are just kind of going, getting back to work. And it's a real kind of time in your life that you don't have, you're not flush with any, you know?
Right.
With money usually at that time in your life. So I think this really, unfortunately, doesn't seem to really address that too, too much. I know you said it can, but I'd love to see those funds go more toward getting services for all of our, you know, kiddos in, in any pre-k program in Quincy, to just try to get to them, because I'd hate the, you know, the family that just can't quite get to a 10 o'clock in the morning service meeting for us. for us. So I'd love for us to be able to widen that. But I know that's, it's not going to go very deep once you widen it. So hopefully that funding continues, that we'd be able to, that's sort of my next question, is like, what, so if we get a grant for $500,000, I know I'm looking probably beyond what anyone has plans for, but what do we do? Like, once we've kind of established this path, what do we do if there is no money on that third year? Or what happens then?
We'd have to talk about that with you. And find out, you know, what we can do, and, you know, what the budget is at that time. You know, we'd have to have that conversation.
From all the districts that I've reached out to and talked to when I first came on board, there's, some of them, like Lowell, Salem, they're all in their second round of, they call it implementation. I haven't met anybody who's been awarded a grant, and then they didn't get it the second time around.
Yeah, I just worry about federal funding, or, you know what I mean, just things being pulled back, that we've now implemented, and that families are coming to rely on, you know, that's what happens, is it's a good, you know, thing that we're doing to be proactive. But then after a few years, it's something we already do, and now pulling it back is not something we want to get into. So, yeah, hopefully that just continues to be able to be supported at the federal level. Yeah, this is all great stuff. I'm excited to see where this goes. And I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Great job.